Let's wait. Let's wait.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Most gracious, heavenly Father, Lord, and pray that you give us wisdom tonight in conducting the school's business. Thank you for loving us. And just be with us tonight, Lord. If any special decisions had to be made, I just pray that you give us wisdom. We love you. It's a beautiful time to pray. Amen.
All may, Lord, we have a quorum. Any motion to approve the consent agenda? Make a motion before we send it on. I've got a motion to approve the consent agenda, first by Dwayne, second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next up is special reports.
Okay, so I've asked Miss Flora Stafford and Jennifer Siegel's not here, but they are our virtual coordinators for Huntsville School District Virtual Academy. And I wanted to highlight some of the things they do with our virtual students. So, Blaine, do you want to speak first or do you want to do the video first?
No, we have a video.
Okay.
So, so, Tugman, Tugman, she, um, she, um, she, the time when her cabin helped her achieve her goals because she learned from, um, her father. And she was taught how to find a real ledge, where to find food, how to protect yourself, and how to make medicine using plants. And, um, the doctor at the end of the road, was a person, the leader of the group. And, well, he led the others to freedom. And he, she, okay, hmm, helped them achieve their goals, freedom. Okay, so, this is recording number two because the first one quits. All right. What I think about virtual learning? I think it's awesome. It's great for kids that can't go to school and can't afford it or something. All that. What I like about it is that, I like that it's a thing, like it actually helps people more than actual school. Like, the actual school is still great, but virtual school is better. But a lot of people have more experience from actual schools and virtual schools. But yeah. The thing about learning from Miss Siegel is that she actually, let's say, like she actually wants us to learn. She wants us to get smart, be happy with school.
And both of these ladies have taken on a lot during unforeseen time. And Miss Stafford hit the ground running this year and was asked late in the game to come on board and has really taken it and created it. So.
So, anyway, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody. I wanted to share with you the PE binder. I stopped by to talk to Shannon one afternoon and Sam to see how things were going, to see if they needed any help. Classes were great. Civics was the best. It's that bad gum PE that killed us. Here is the PE binder. They have to do a weekly log of PE stuff. I mean, it is page after page. It is the most thorough PE curriculum I have ever laid my eyes on. I took it, I want to take this home to Coach Stafford and say, here's the curriculum. But anyway, I did want to share this with you just so you could see.
I don't think it was Stafford's.
Not. I mean, y'all have just got to see this.
I've gone through Stafford's PE and that was not.
I'll tell him you said that. I do want to thank the district and Alder for promoting the virtual learning. Virtual learning is not for every child, but it is for some. We have had some that have absolutely thrived virtually. They are knocking it out of the park. I have tutored some kids using our ALBS program. And that curriculum is tough. If you can think back to music appreciation or art appreciation, the college courses that we had, those were the ones I sat in the back of the room and I thought, oh my God, is this semester ever going to be over? Kids are thriving. That, I mean, they can, I don't know what's happening to some of them. But it's like they are a bird out of the cage. On the other hand, we have some kids who are not thriving as much. And it tends to be our older kids who went virtual so maybe they could work. And they're working too many hours. They're working forty hours a week and trying to go to school full-time. And you can tell in their grades. But we're struggling to try and get through. This next semester, we looked over applications today, and I think in grades six through twelve, we'll probably have anywhere from sixteen to eighteen kids. And in grades three through six, I think Jennifer had told me we would have around twelve. Is that right, Mr. Kane?
So far.
So, you know, some of our kids were still staying with us. Some are coming back on campus because they found out that they're not disciplined enough or motivated enough. They need that structure. And we have some kids who are leaving our campus to join us virtually. So it's a good trade-off. Like I said, I think it's a great thing. I think it's the future. I see, you know, I look at college campuses and I see more and more of our kids taking online courses. They're getting online degrees. And I think if we can train some of our students to go that direction, then we'll have, you know, we'll have our kids getting their degree. Do y'all have any questions for me?
No, but I have heard besides what Miss Alder said, heard really great things about what you've done this year. So we appreciate you stepping down like you did and doing what you did for us.
Thank you.
Because it was a tough time. Whenever you took it over, we know. And you've done a really good job. We appreciate it.
I may be one of the happiest people in the district. I don't know. I've enjoyed it. I've enjoyed it. It's different.
I'll say, from a principal's perspective, it's been, it's been nice knowing that she's taking care of those people that are out there doing the virtual because, you know, last year we were kind of trying to keep up with that. And it's tough. You know, we've got all those kids onsite and trying to keep up with that. And she's done a great job of updating us and letting us know how everybody's doing and kind of keeping track of all that.
On the other side of that, we have students that are on campus that for some reason or the other, you know, it could have been during the COVID past, when they were online, they failed some classes. And so they've gotten behind in their credits. So we're using that program for credit recovery. So, you know, so that they won't be behind, so that we can try to get them to graduate on time. So I think we've had thirty kids in, you know, so far this semester. So it's been very beneficial to them.
Well, we appreciate you.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'll give it to you after Mr. Dest.
Okay.
I'll, I just want, on the, on the ALBS, the Apex system that we use, one of the neatest instances I've seen of it is we had an eighth grader come to us that had taken Spanish previously at another school. And we didn't, I mean, she was ready for AP Spanish in eighth grade. And so she's onsite, but she's taking that advanced AP Spanish as an eighth grader. And so it's, it's an awesome resource for even our onsite kids to take courses that we normally couldn't offer. So it's, there's lots of avenues there for success.
Awesome. Thanks, Bailey. All right, next up, a secret paper report.
Okay, first, we have the comparison financial report. It's been your third cap. There isn't really any major, major changes for your year on the table. Any questions on that? Next, we have attendance report. And again, shout out to Mr. Warren for putting this together each month. Current enrollment as of November fifteenth was two thousand two hundred and fourteen. Current enrollment as of today, two thousand two hundred and fourteen. So we stayed steady. And December of last year, two thousand one hundred and seventy-eight. And then he had to break down from campus to campus. And then he put together some charts that you can see comparing months and then years. Next up, the COVID update. Unfortunately, it times this change by the minute. I did this at about ten o'clock this morning. Right now, Watson Primary has fifty-three out in quarantine. Our pre-K classes have been hit hard. And twenty-one of those will return tomorrow. Intermediate has stayed pretty minimal here lately. Middle school has none. It's odd how it changes from campus to campus. High school has fifty-five total in came right now. And St. Paul has eleven total between elementary and high school. So it's my next Tuesday when I, or tomorrow I'll do another report. So hopefully it'll go down. But we've definitely had enough to tell him, even if we had anything.
In the last three weeks, we've been hit really hard. I mean, not just us, but all of the state. But like you said, it's been mostly the upper grade levels, but middle school's pulled out of it now. And it's starting to go for the younger ones like it did early in the year. So hopefully that's, well, calmed down a little bit. But it's been, for the last three weeks, it's been every day. So.
And I will say with pre-K, part of the reason they, they all end up quarantined in the class because they love on each other and you can't keep them separated. So that's why it's always a full class when we have a positive. So any questions about that?
No questions. All right. Thank you. Administration report?
Um, Mr. Kane, how about we start with you?
Well, it's pretty short. There's the last week before Christmas, but we're having Christmas parties. We're having third, fourth grade Christmas parties on Thursday and fifth grade on Friday. Have reports ready at the end of the week and ready to go home and have Christmas.
None's pretty short tonight, too. I should have mentioned the last time we met. Tammy Long was awarded with the Arkansas Education Association's Education Support Professional of the Year. They had a big banquet on November fifth and honored her with that. I believe Tracy was the one to nominate her. And did you want to say anything about that?
I mean, it's a big deal because it was across the whole state.
It is a big deal.
Um, we did find out today now that NEA is looking at nominating her also for a
National?
Yes, at the national level. So we'll see how that goes once it hits. But it's kind of interesting. It's whatever our own stuff.
Good for her.
Other than that, we just finished our map testing. We're still doing some makeups, but we've just initially started looking at our data and seeing a lot of growth. So, you know, we're pretty happy about that. And the kids, all week last week, they tested on Tuesday and Thursday. Hear kids in the hallway talking about, oh, my, my score went up to this and my score was this. And I just love hearing that because they're, they're as interested in it as we are. And so they're, they're motivated to try to see those scores go up. And, and that's what it takes to get them there. So, but yeah, we're just getting ready for Christmas break and finish this week up. Grades are due Friday. The four charts will be coming out soon. So Merry Christmas. Yeah, Merry Christmas.
I don't know if y'all know this, but NHS, National Honor Society, had a Krispy Kreme Donut fundraiser and they sold two hundred and seventy-six dozen donuts. And we got half of that as the funds. So fifteen hundred dollars of that went back into the NHS account. It pays for their national dues. For the chapter, it's around four hundred dollars. And then the seniors get to wear those pretty stalls. And they're not cheap. So that'll help pay for those. And then also they're going to buy necessity items for our, our clothing closet. So underwear, socks, personal care items that kids need that don't always have to. So that was, there's a lot of donuts in my Pathfinder. It was, it smelled good, but a lot of donuts. Semester exams are this week, starting on the master schedule development for next school year. I talked with North Ark. She's going to be over next week to set up the CNA labs for their clinicals. So we'll be running that in the, in Huntsville. So it's just those little ti, those little things, the tiny little supplies that you don't think about, that she's going to come over and, and set up the, the head of that. So we'll have about twelve to thirteen CNAs at the end of the school year through that program. So that's very, very exciting. Welding, I don't know if you've, if you've been down to the little kid's school, the, the building, the new building down there, they made the ramp for that, the, the class out there at the, at the CTE building made that. And they're also going to present the dinosaurs, which are out past the high school. So they're going to have a big thing about that that we'll get to the newspaper. But also, we already got people looking at to hire those kids. So J.L. Bryson is, is wanting to hire some, and so is Adams', his son-in-law. So we've got kids, this is a great thing for our kids. So they're, they're going to get hired quickly, for sure. On, on PD Day on January third, we've got trauma-informed care by the rural agency. So in the morning, the secondary buildings with St. Paul, which is middle school, high school, will do that. And then the elementaries will do it that afternoon. So that's something that we're missing in our, in our RTI. Also have band concert tomorrow night at the high school at six thirty. So if y'all want to come around that way, it's, it's over there. And I just signed the piece of paper for the high school diplomas. And that's May twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. The funny calendar. So now it'll be on the football field again. And then next year it'll be our new building.
Sure.
At the mercy of the weather. Anyway, thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
I think she about covered all my stuff. But let y'all know, I've been working closely with Nurse T on, on the COVID stuff. So I'm getting really good at the cameras. So if y'all ever need to locate anything in the high school, I can find it for you. And now parents and students know that. And I get emails and phone calls that they know that. So if you're missing earbuds or jackets, or think somebody called you a bad name in this part of the building, I can, I can now find that for you. So, but yeah, that's been part of our, our duties lately is mostly life time where kids tend to get up and go all over the places. And it was particularly useful when we had kids, you know, who had different friends they were moving around with. So it's been, it's been a lot of our life, though. But I've had a lot to add other than that. So y'all have a Merry Christmas and be y'all here next year.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
We've just kind of been ate up with the, we can't hardly stay healthy out of transportation. I wanted to thank everybody that's been helping out here. Jonathan, Bailey helping. We've got half the football staff driving, Steve's been driving. I'm gonna break on Kimmy Watson, Jeff Reeves. You can throw them just about anywhere in the county, turn them loose and they'll come back empty. So that's good. And down south, we've got Cindy helping out, Whitmore's helping out, Jeff Mac is helping out. Just a big thank you to everybody. Probably gonna lead all of you on Fridays. Custodial end, things are going pretty well. I mean, we've got a couple out right now, one with close contact and one that tested positive. But she's doing really well, not showing any hard symptoms at all. So they'll be out through the Christmas break. The maintenance side of things going really smooth. We had our inspection week four last from the state inspector. Come up and we only had one minor, minor deal over all the schools. So I'm real proud, proud of our maintenance guys for that. So just kind of clicking along, kind of ending out the year on a good note.
That's awesome. What about the new building?
New building's coming along really well. As most of you know, that went over the CE.
No, I'm sorry. I was talking about the pod.
Your pod, yeah. Yeah. Pod, pod's done. Pod's done. The only thing we got left to do is we're going to build a set of steps in-house coming out the back. We got the ADA ramp installed thanks to Jamie Johnson out at the welding and a little concrete work. And classes are, classes are in there and going really well. So.
Good deal. Thank you.
The food service is doing good. I want to thank everyone that helped at the Thanksgiving dinner. It went well. Our IT guys, that actually, they came and helped us at the high school. And we had a bunch of volunteer students from the high school that came and served at middle school and at primary. And it all went well. And we couldn't have done it without them. So we really appreciate it. How the ladies did too. Everything's, we're hanging in there. It's been rough some days, but we're hanging in there. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you.
We have obviously basketball going right now. We, we have games.
Um, we have, uh, obviously basketball going right now. We, we have games four out of five nights this week, uh, plus one on Saturday. So I guess six nights or five nights.
Eighteen.
Disney never ends. It's basketball season. There's something nearly every night. Uh, we have a football banquet Wednesday night because that's the only night we can find at night. Didn't have basketball. So anyway, that, I think one tournament over the, over the break, uh, the girls and boys playing in Neo Show, that tournament they play in every year. But everything's going good. I think you're doing well, brother.
Thanks, sir.
Um, nothing new with the tech. We're just trucking along. Um, I'm working on some E-RAY project to hopefully get us funding for some of that stuff with the federal government. But other than that, we're just getting ready for break and I'm working, trying to work it where our guys can take the full break this year. So hopefully, hopefully they'll work out that because they, they've, they've really busted it this year and, and they deserve that. So Merry Christmas. I don't thank you for your support.
Merry Christmas. Hopefully we'll be a better Christmas break for you guys this year. Yeah.
Basically, the only thing I have is the accreditation report that is continual for the first time showed all green and we were all good. Everything, uh, credit, credited pending. Basically what that means is we ba- we'll have it that way until the end of May. Uh, each month it runs through the cycle and if we have any changes, like we have new hires or stuff like that, then potentially you can change. But those are the only things that could really throw it back into not accredited at this point. So that's, that's, that was good news.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not used to being quiet this morning, so I don't hardly know what to say. No. Um, so last week we were able to have our, um, little Christmas performance. We just had second grade. It's kind of the seniors at the school get to do their performance. So that was a really special thing for them because they've only known COVID in their short little school life. And so, um, it was a beautiful performance and I'm so thankful for Megan Roach for all that she does to put that together. She blows me. I never pop in on those rehearsals or anything and all. I mean, it's like turden cats when you deal with five-year-olds and she does an amazing job. So I'm so thankful for that and I know the families enjoy getting to see them. Um, I also want to just say how much we appreciate our Gowanus Club, um, Operation Blue Gene, um, Dollar General at Marvel that hosted a toy drive. They reached out to us and asked if they could do that for us. Um, just the community partners that we have right here that just come together and make sure that our kids have a good Christmas because, um, of the generosity of the people that take time to donate and shop and all of those wonderful things. Um, and then tomorrow we have another entity that has supported our school the last three years. It's called the Great, Great Gift Exchange. And for the second year in a row, they will be delivering boxes of gifts. It has, Tanya helped me remember it had, um,
Gloves and hats.
Gloves, hats, but then really nice toy, um, either for a girl or a boy. And some of you with primary kids may remember they're coming tomorrow. Every single student, um, pre-K through second grade will receive a gift box. They will, if you are not busy between twelve-thirty and two tomorrow, I invite you to the primary because they'll just come in and we'll, we'll unload five hundred and twenty boxes is what they'll be delivering. So we're just so thankful for the generosity of our community and, um, what a special thing that is to know that these kids will all have a good Christmas because of them. So.
Fantastic. Thank you, Jen.
Well, last month I shared that all federal budgets have been accepted and this month, month we're revising those budgets because it's just that time of year. So, um, that's what I'm working on and also working with the schools on literacy plans. We're going to cross the district this year. So we, real, uh, detailed information on how each school is approaching the literacy, um, education in their buildings.
Self-security.
Yeah.
Uh, special ed world, we are preparing for our monitoring cycle, which is every three years. And they'll be coming in in January to check our compliance, our due process and our budget. So that will be fun. Uh, transition programming, I was going to talk about that. If you could jump in and help me. Our transition program at the high school, um, they've got some really cool things. We've, they've, um, made your dinner a couple of years ago. Do you remember that, that group? Well, they also have, uh, two di- two or three different little businesses. One of them is they cook, um, treats and different things and sell their food products. But they have a laser cutter.
Glove forge.
Okay. Well, I don't even know what any of that means.
They did ornaments.
The ornaments were amazing. Like they, um, I think they've sold out. Did you see them?
Cutting boards, I think is what I'm thinking.
Cutting boards. Uh, but the ornaments were just really amazing. Cutting board's super nice, but, um, super proud. They're going to, uh, look to put those out in the craft vendors and stuff. We're going to go in different places next year and the kids were super excited. And they, uh, we also have about ten, I believe, that go out in the community and are working, um, part-time jobs. And, uh, the grant pays their salary. And so we have some as dog groomers and, um, working at different, um, stalkers and different things. Putting things on the shelf stalkers, making sure I'm saying that correctly. Caught me off guard there a little bit. And then I just wanted to comment on our unified program at the high school also. They just competed in bowling, um, with their partners, unified partners. And if you are looking forward to the plunge coming up in February, start thinking about, you know, what costume you're going to wear for the polar plunge. It'll be here soon, Dwayne. He's looking like he's, that's it.
Also to, um, with Tanya, what Tanya is saying, we do have a few students that are unable to go out into the community. So they do stuff there at the high school. So the wash windows and
Custody.
And different things to keep it clean, but change the sign out there. So, um, like everybody has a job. So.
Yeah. They take care of our marquee.
Irish dude.
Irish dude.
Mary Tina, go ahead.
Thank you guys very much. Okay, on to, uh, new business.
Okay, first, this is an exciting thing. Um, I'm asking for approval to do a certified bonus and the reason certified and classified is going to be separate. Teacher equalization pay came about this year and we could have put it in our salary schedule last year or we could do a, um, bonus form this year. So we're going to do a bonus form this year and then work, I'll work with PPC this spring and get it built into our salary schedule for next spring. It is funded. Um, it's mandated and funded by the states, states specifically for certified in an effort to bring our district's median salary up to the state's median. And they take an average of, of all of your salaries to come up with that. Uh, we will receive four hundred and three thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and forty cents over the course of this year. We don't have all of the money yet. It'll be divided evenly among our hundred and ninety certified staff this year. Um, after fringe employees should take home roughly eight hundred in December and then another hundred, eight hundred in May. Now realize that won't be until the penny. Um, this year it will be paid as a bonus and next year it gets built into the salary schedule. This is already gone before PPC, um, with a vote in favor of a hundred and fifty-five to two. Um, our salary schedule next year, we will have to raise the master's salary schedule. Um, so we'll, we'll be putting a lot of work into that. So.
So that's in addition to, this is going to be in addition to the raise that we have to do anyways, or?
Well, that's what this, this money is for. If I understand your question, I may have interrupted you before.
I should know if like there were going to be two separate raises or just one to get to that level, if that's, so it's guaranteed money?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
They will fund it from here on out.
Okay.
Last spring, when this came about, I felt a little rushed and some districts just added a certain percentage to the base or whatever. But I wanted to look at it closely and by doing it this way this year, all certified are going to get the same. It's going to benefit more this way than with the other, but by next year it has to.
With all guarantees that funding?
Mm-hmm.
It, it, will that be subject to change, you think?
No, if anything, it'll go up, but no, it's
Yeah, that's what I meant. Well, that's what I was hoping anyway.
I, I wouldn't, I don't expect it to change much for a while. Did you want anything, Tracy?
Um, no, everyone's pretty excited about it.
This is state or federal?
State.
State. This was some time ago when the governor came on and said he was raising teacher salaries and I think it was like back in March or April. And that's part of this thing, conversation.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
First, McCollum.
Second.
Second, Budge Neil. All in favor? Take the motion for the vote. Can it carry? Vote for Carrie.
Okay, next, um, I'm asking for a proposed bonus for classified. The teacher equalization funding that we just talked about can only go as certified salaries. And we all know our classified staff has worked tirelessly as well. So looking closely at the budget, I'm asking Tina and I million questions and looking at things. Um, I feel comfortable to put forth twelve hundred for each classified employee. So I'm proposing that each classified employee receive a one-time bonus of twelve hundred dollars. But our fringe will come out of that, but, um, something important to note, too, this is unrelated to the S R fund. The extra compensation that they're getting through S R, this, this is unrelated. This is coming out of operating. And we have a total of a hundred and fifty-two classified employees and that was total roughly a hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred dollars for classified employees. And it has gone through CPUC with a one hundred percent. So Michelle, did you want to add anything?
I don't think so. We're classified as grateful for, um, you guys looking into this. And there's a, a note in the next page from Miss Onho.
So Tina, those things we were talking about, this is, this is no problem.
Right. Has nothing to do with those funds that we talked about. Make the motion.
We've got a motion by Lenora.
Take it.
Second by Kyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, next we have our monthly transfer of mileage money. And I need a motion to move money from one account to the other for payments.
Make motion to first, but Carrie, second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Okay, next, we're going to put Jonathan in the hot seat. He has prepared our facilities master plan and, um, has a resolution to put forward to y'all tonight.
Right, so, uh, as part of the master's facility plan, there's two pieces of paper that I'd like to, one I'd like to review and then the other is the actual resolution. And the, this something that you do, the resolution is something that you do every two years. So you, it may look familiar to you. Uh, but first, if you'll look at the, just the handout, that is the facilities master plan. Uh, it's, you know, the first number is timeline and academic facilities partnership program. And then it has a list of projects. This is the list of projects that are in our master's facilities plan right now currently, with the exception of the two, one of them says not required and then right below that, replacement of all have that. That's just been planned, but it's not in our actual, in, in our actual state reported facilities plan because it doesn't technically have to be. But looking at those projects, I just wanted to give you an idea of, A, what was in the plan. Uh, and then B, what, what we're spending, what we're, what it's costing, things like that. The bottom one in the yellow was one that was there. It was deleted, um, at some point over the last two years. Um, and then, uh, you know, I, it's a roof replacement and, and that's the, you know, those are the things that if you ever wanted to explore, you know, trying to do something like that and getting partnership funding for it. This, you know, the state does partnership funding every two years. That cycle is right now. We'd have, you know, it'd be a rush to get anything in at this point right now, honestly. But it, it would be technically possible, but it's a commitment, uh, not the application, but you know, permit yourself to funding something that you've applied for, you know, two years, potentially two years down the road if it gets approved. Um, and looking at, you know, talking with Steve and Steve and some of the things that we've talked about in just in general, you know, roofing of Watson and then the middle school came up as well. Those are potential projects that are coming up. Maybe, you know, so I just wanted to put that information on there as well for you. That's really it as far as the review of those things. The, the plan itself is due in February. We submit that. And then if, if there was any decision to do any kind of partnership, that's the month later. You have to submit that through their, through their system.
Been talking about that partnership. I mean, are we like behind on anything?
Well, you've missed a window where they will allow you to, you have a hundred and twenty days before that March meeting to come to the, to the facilities people with a, with an application and they review it, kind of like a pre-approval. They tell you, here's what's, here's what you're missing. Here's what you need to correct. Here's what, how you need to word it. To maybe get better to, to submit it on that date. So we've missed that window. The application window is still open, you know, and I'm not pushing it one way or the other.
So forgive me, how, did we miss that?
The, what I would call like pre-approval type?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we did.
So how, but how did we miss that?
How? Oh, it, I mean, it was, I mean, it, I don't know. It was just a hundred and twenty days before that March first timeline is when they say that you have to talk to them for that, for that date. It's not the actual deadline for
If you're looking for partnership funding.
If you're looking for partnership funding. There, there's no, that's, all of that is if you're looking for partnership funding.
Got you.
So are we looking for partnership funding?
For the roof, for the roofs, I think this would be a good thing.
So should we have been going a little more diligent on getting that in to see if we were missing anything or?
Okay, what, what we did on the roof, on the intermediate particular, uh, we had a number of leaks on the seams. And that's almost a virtually, almost a flat roof.
Yeah.
And, uh, we had a harness roof that come in and repair all the seams on that building. Uh, so that kind of pushed us back to where we're not in a time crunch of having to replace a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar roof. And that was a price two years ago. So you can imagine what the price is now. So, uh, we, we've kind of repaired it and moved it back so that we're not, not really rushed. Everything's really good right now. So.
So we apply for
Now, I'm sorry, I portrayed it as, as it, the roof was falling down. I didn't mean it that way.
Right, no. So if we're applying for this foundation funding, say we don't get it, then we are obligated to go ahead?
No.
And do the repairs or?
No.
Okay.
Didn't we do this a couple of years ago with, uh, some other stuff, I thought, that we?
Not since I've been in this room, but I know the district senate in the past. Yeah.
Because we had to talk about it ahead of time, get it on the list if we wanted it, around the deadlines or whatever.
We were going to do that a lot with the CTE building. I know that like, I mean, because it was like an every other year type deal. And I mean, it was one of those, you either get it or you don't get it. There was no guarantee.
Well, I thought we did that with the, with the activity building too, though.
Well, so, but it's about wouldn't apply for us on that ticket.
Yeah.
That was a problem. We did, we did try, but it didn't apply to the state.
And then we, we approved this repair of the roof thing here a while back too, the, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at that, that ten, eleven thousand dollars versus two hundred and fifty thousand. And I think the last partnership funding, and I could be wrong, uh, this is before that I started with the school, was the re-roofing of the kindergarten, put the membrane roof on. I think that was the last partnership thing that we had.
I remember when we did that because we brought in that, that, that roof material and let us look at it.
Yeah, it's a membrane. Yeah.
Yeah. Didn't they do that on the high school too?
No, we re-roofed that one up. No, it was, it's to a membrane, I think.
Uh, it's, it's a membrane.
Yeah.
But it's, it's an old roof. So it's not leaking right now? No, sir.
No, I'm, no, I'm sorry. I made it just, I didn't mean for that to be what it sounded like.
So is this going to be something that you need to get estimates on?
There would be a lot of different work.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Because we're not ready.
No, we're not. And I'm, no.
I'm sorry, saying that we have to do it because it's two years in advance.
It is, yeah.
Well, I'm saying if you wanted to apply to the state to get some, some help from the state in that facility, in that area. We have to do it by March first.
If it's not submitted by March first.
It's not going to happen for the next cycle.
And the cycle is two years?
Every two years. And you're, so if you even look at, you know, if we submit this cycle, it's on that number two. You know, we would know approval in May of twen- uh, twenty twenty-four. So even then, it's still extended way out there for.
Are you talking about the upgrade of the bathroom?
No, sir.
No.
This bottom. Any, anything that you, anything that you apply for, you're not knowing if you're going to be approved for it for a year and a half out. And then you have two years to actually do the work.
Well, is this repair going to last for four years? Is this repair going to last for four years? It should last a lot longer than that. Yeah, we completely took the seams down to bare metal and resewed it.
I even think, I mean, it probably doesn't hurt to go ahead and apply for it. I mean, just because we don't know what two years holds and, I mean, and then to even get the funding to be another two more years. I mean, I mean, you are looking at, you know, upwards of, you know, three, four years.
And there's a lot of other factors that go into that along the, on the school dude line as far as work orders for our maintenance tax. Each work order is logged and according to that building. And within the last year, we had a lot of leaks.
Yeah.
On that building. So all of that will factor in to whether they ever want to approve it or not approve it. And how much money have we spent? How much time have we spent there repairing and doing what we did in-house? So.
That should help.
Yes, that, that will help. And all of that is logged. It's in the system. So.
Close the fact that we went back and resold the tron. Did everything we could.
Right.
So my question would be to all this is, okay, so the last thing Jonathan wants to hear is March 1st deadline. But since we missed a window, by us missing that window for pre-approval, to go ahead and try to put this together and submit it by March 1st, by not having the pre-approval, do you think that hurts the, the chances?
Honestly, I couldn't tell you one way or the other. I put a call to the state department to see if it would and they haven't gotten back to me.
I'm shocked.
I would, you know, I guess I could just take a gander and say that it's possible that it does hurt you just in talking to other people who have done this process already. But it's not a, it's not a guarantee that it's not approved or anything like that. So, you know, it might be, it's, it's at least worth the time and effort of exploring it.
I was saying, worst case scenario, we don't get approved in two years. We can redo it again, make that deadline to try to do the pre-approval.
You just roll them down.
And just, yeah, I mean, try now, but then in two years it doesn't. Do it again. So.
Do you have the time, is there enough time between now and March 1st deadline to put that together?
I, I would assume so, but I'd have to, you know, if you come, if we come back in January and I'm pale-faced and, you know, I square me, then I, I might say no, but right now, I, I would assume so.
So do you expect an answer back hopefully at some point?
Yes, yeah. I'll start, I'll badger them a little bit more. Just called last week, so.
If you wouldn't mind, would you convey that to Ms. Campbell whenever you get that answer? And so we can give a little feedback of what they had to say about that?
I sure would.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
So the second part of this is the resolution. This is something that is done every, every two years. Basically just says that, you know, we are submitting this master plan, which the master plan itself is mainly a compilation of the data that Steve was talking about. You know, the school dudes and, you know, your, how old your facilities are. It's, it's just something that you update every couple of years. There's not really a, not really a lot to it other than just that type of data information. And this is the resolution that, that basically says you support the, the six-year.
Six-year master plan.
That needs to be agreed.
That resolution here.
Okay, I need a.
I'll make a motion.
First by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Janil. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
She wasn't lying. She did put you on the hot seat. All right, next, transfer request. I need a motion to approve the transfer request.
I'll do that, Danny.
Thank you, Carrie. First by Carrie, second by Dwayne. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, personnel resignations, hires and transfers. I need a motion to approve, please. First by Janil. Second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Ms. Oliver.
Okay, resignation, certified, Grant Lyre, Council High School Athletics and Teacher, December 17th, 2021. Brianna Burgess, St. Paul Teacher, December 17th, 2021. Hires, classified, Tiffany Chadwell, St. Paul Bus Driver, December 14th. Sasha Christman, Huntsville Middle School's Bed Parrot Professional, January 3rd. Transfers, certified, River Gogner, junior head, junior high head boys' basketball coach to senior high head boys' basketball coach, D and that be effective January 3rd, 2022. Deion Duncan, assistant coach to middle school head softball coach, middle school, December 14th. And one termination, classified, Melissa Watkins, Huntsville High School Food Service, November 23rd.
All right, is there any other more comments, questions, discussion items? Well, I would like to say thank you to every single one of you that worked for this district and for everything that you guys have been through this year. And we thank you. We are very proud of all you guys and what y'all have done and what you do on a daily basis. It's been a tough year for everybody, say the very least for you guys and what y'all have done. And y'all, we feel like that we have a municipal district in Arkansas playing a role. And I believe that just because of the people that's in it. So I appreciate you guys. We thank you. And I want each and every one of you to have a Merry Christmas. And hopefully you guys can get a little break and go with some time with your families and friends and kids. And look forward to seeing everybody back in January. So Merry Christmas to everybody and we appreciate you. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn. You got it. First by Kevin, second by Dwayne. All in favor?
Aye.